Okay, well, welcome once again to the At Large City Council Candidate Forum. This forum is sponsored by East Hampton Media, East Hampton Climate Action, and the East Hampton Democratic City Committee. In addition to this webinar, this forum is being livestreamed on cable channel 193, on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel, and on Facebook. You will be able to watch a recording of the forum on the East Hampton Media YouTube channel. I'm Stephen Linsky, and I'm joined tonight by fellow East Hampton Democratic City Committee members Paige Delinsky and Evan LeBeau. We want to thank the other co-sponsors who are joining us in this evening. Jen Ramsey from East Hampton Media, without whom none of this would be possible. Thank you so much, Jen. And Connie Dawson from East Hampton Climate Action. Connie will now describe tonight's program.
Thanks, Steve. In 2020, 74% of East Hampton voters supported a ballot initiative that required Massachusetts to achieve 100% renewable energy use within the next two decades. This March, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts adopted aggressive plans to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by passing the Next Generation Climate Bill. And this September, the East Hampton City Council passed a resolution declaring that a climate emergency threatens our city and humanity. It states that a mobilization to meet this challenge is both a moral imperative and an unprecedented opportunity to stabilize the climate, to remedy environmental harms, to create clean energy jobs, and improve human lives. It calls on the city government to reach net zero emissions, to protect natural habitat in open space, to minimize the waste stream, and to move away from fossil fuels and the impact of diet and food choices on the planet. We are presenting this forum to inform the public about the candidates' views on a broad range of issues, particularly those affecting the environment. We take no positions in support of or in opposition to any of the candidates. If you are attending this webinar, you may ask questions of the candidates through the chat feature. The chat will be monitored throughout the sessions, and a representative sample will be presented at the end of the forum, as time allows. If you're having technical difficulty, you can use the chat to ask for help. Our questions were prepared in advance and shared with the candidates ahead of time. We asked candidates to limit their comments to the questions asked and to be respectful of the hosts and of each other. Candidates will have two minutes to answer each question. Our timekeeper Evan LeBeau will give a 30-second visual warning, and at the two-minute mark will inform speakers that their time is up. Speakers will be allowed to complete their thoughts, but their microphones will be cut off after an additional 15 seconds. Responses to our audience questions will be limited to one minute. And now, I'm happy to welcome our moderator Ben Wile, UMass Extension Assistant Professor of Building Energy. Dr. Wile does applied research and teaching in building science and energy systems, is associated with the UMass Clean Energy Center, and leads the UMass Clean Energy Corps. He provides outreach consulting services to municipalities, nonprofits, and institutions, primarily towards transitioning buildings to run on 100% renewable energy. Dr. Wile has published extensively on a wide range of topics related to environmental issues. And it's up to you now, Ben. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie, and welcome candidates. And so the first round is going to be your introductory statements. It's a chance for you to introduce yourself and your candidacy, and if possible, how you relate in particular to the issue of climate and the environment. And I have shuffled the names for each of these questions, so I'll first go to Connie Denham.
Hi, everyone. So good to see you. I just want to thank the East Hampton Democratic City Committee, Climate Action, and East Hampton Media. I know how challenging this can be, and I appreciate the work that you're doing on this. Hello, everyone who's here this evening. My name is Connie Denham. I've lived here in East Hampton for the last 10 years. I've served on the Affordable Housing Partnership for a few years within the city. And I also work at UMass Amherst with students who actually work on issues like this around food justice and have worked on climate issues as well. I'm particularly very interested in affordability. I'm interested in local economies. I'm interested in small growth, as well as open spaces and renewable energy. And I think that all of these issues intersect when we think about environmental justice, when we think about net zero emissions, et cetera. And I think that it's very important for us as a community to collectively work on how all of these things intersect, to think about them, so that we can plan accordingly for the impacts of climate change that are coming our way. Yeah, so I'll leave it there.
Okay, and next to Brad Riley.
Yeah, so hi, everybody. I'm Brad Riley. So first, I wanted to thank East Hampton Media, our moderator, the sponsors, and all the folks supporting the production of our debate tonight. Though I can't thank everybody individually, I also want to thank all the community members in attendance tonight and at home watching, who helped me learn the ropes of campaigning in a pandemic. So thank you for that. So I've been a resident of East Hampton for about a decade now. I live here with my husband. I have two adult daughters who are both in college right now. Throughout my life, I've tried to find solutions from my own lived experiences with violence and homelessness. That road has taken me through transitional housing programs for survivors of sexual and domestic violence, families without homes, LGBTQ youth, and senior citizens with co-occurring mental health and substance abuse diagnoses. I have a master's in education, and I'm completing my master's in policy and public administration. For the first six years or so that I've lived in East Hampton, I worked in insurance for homeowner survivors of natural disasters. And for the last two years, I've served the city of East Hampton on the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. And I'm also currently serving on the School Reuse Committee as well. As a general platform, I'm focused on housing affordability, poverty alleviation, and reimagining a new public infrastructure that's both sustainable and affordable. I'm so incredibly grateful to be here tonight with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Lindsay Rothschild.
Hello. My name is Lindsay Rothschild. Thank you again, like everyone else, the East Hampton Media, Climate Action Now, Democratic Committee, Ben, for your great moderation of the first debate. Hopefully, we'll be a little less lively. So I've had the privilege of the last two years serving as a city councillor at large in East Hampton. And in that time, we've gotten, as a city, to grapple with things that are on the international and national stage, as is the pandemic, the aftermath of the murder of George Floyd, climate change. These are all things that affect global and national levels, yet they reverberate here. So that's been really challenging and also heartening to be part of the city conversations with our city government and residents, working through those hard conversations and finding innovative and creative solutions to those. Or not solutions, but ways forward, I should say. I'm an educator. I was an ESL teacher for many years, working with immigrant populations. I am also, in the pandemic, I form an online learning company. Innovation is something that I think defines the perspective that I bring to all conversations, and also equity and inclusion. In terms of climate change, I will admit that I'm not the most knowledgeable on the topic. I'm passionate about it, and in my own life, like I think a lot of us, we're working towards, you know, getting my house away from fossil fuels. I have an electric vehicle, and I care about, I bring the lens of equity and inclusion to that as well, in terms of energy justice and making sure that those opportunities are available to people who are of low and moderate income as well. So I just want to say, I'm looking forward to serving for another two years and continuing to work on housing, climate change, the Mayor's Pledge Report, and universal design issues in our city. And that's it. I asked the voters to give me another two years.
Thank you. And lastly, to Owen Zarrett.
Hey, everybody. I'm Owen Zarrett. Again, as everyone mentioned, thank you to our moderator, East Hampton Media, the East Hampton Dems, and to you, the voters and residents of East Hampton. My name is Owen Zarrett. As I mentioned, I've lived here for 21 years with my spouse and child, a variety of dogs. We're currently down to one, and our two 16-and-a-half-year-old cats, one of whom I just had to give their insulin to. Very excited, hopefully, for a third term. I'm a medical professional with 18 years of experience in the region, working in a variety of specialties, currently been practicing in orthopedics for 10 years. I'm also very fortunate to sit on the Board of Directors of Laughter Communities, honored as well to work with the East Hampton Beautification Team, doing citywide cleanups and getting rid of those nip bottles, and have been working for the past few years trying to bring people in to the experience of the Jewish community, holding events such as Hanukkah on the Pond. Most of my main focus on the city council has actually been to try to step outside of city council chambers and to build a platform that calls people into our municipal process. How can we all work together and have meaningful conversations that are collaborative, compassionate, and respectful? In chambers, though, and over the course of my time in the council, I focused on a number of varied issues, including supporting framework for a responsible and growing cannabis community, a number of resolutions around issues such as affordable healthcare, gun violence, and transgender rights, supporting our workers from wage theft. Climate-wise, we worked on opting into the PACE program for allowing commercial businesses to more easily implement energy efficiency, reducing our reliance on single-use plastics, advocating for outdoor space use such as dog parks, skate parks, disc golf. I helped to co-sponsor our climate crisis resolution, and I'm helping right now with the working group to work on a new solar ordinance. The past 18 months, I've been proud to work in support of our city messaging and supporting our small businesses through the pandemic, as well as providing responsible messaging regarding COVID safety and please get vaccinated. I'm a big supporter of the arts and local business, trying to perform regular interviews and spotlighting these individuals and entrepreneurs. For my third term, I'm hoping to address mostly environment issues, such as our solar use and fostering pollinator spaces in corridors, as well as addressing some nuts and bolts issues in the cities, such as the events that we hold, the framework in which they occur, and how much noise we generate. I'm very interested in this.
I'm hoping we can save a lot of those, some of the questions, as we go, because there's a lot there. So the next question is a substantive question, and these will be familiar. So what specific vulnerabilities to climate change do you see facing East Hampton, and what steps will you take to address them? And I'll go first to Brad Riley.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I mean, consider this. Since the year 2000, New England has felt the effects of 48 named tropical storms, only 32 for the entire 20th century. There is no public works infrastructure in New England that was originally designed to withstand the deluge of rain and high wind gusts that are associated with these storms, especially not infrastructures that are already too old and in need of serious repair. The abundant maple and pine trees throughout the Pioneer Valley are also unable to withstand this dramatic shift in the climate. And so what we're left with is a result of compounding issues, as we've seen, downed power lines, heavy localized flooding, which is stressing out our water systems, and then even the displacement of wildlife into our city, as was the case in the Mount Tom microburst. So cost is, of course, the greatest vulnerability currently facing East Hampton. We're locked in a stalemate where the only way to maintain our public works infrastructure is to continue raising taxes on our residents. And the fact of the matter is, we're not making meaningful enough progress, but the increased taxes will eventually come back down, or that the repairs are going to be sufficiently made. It's my assessment that this is a runaway train where we're dumping our revenue into an infrastructure that simply will not self-sustain in our new climate. I do think that this is an inflection point of opportunity, though. As a city councillor, I see myself in an advocacy and educator role for the government and the public. We need to start having meaningful conversations about what that green infrastructure will look like and how we're going to attain it. We're lucky to live in the heart of the knowledge corridor, and we ought to be working together with colleges and universities who specialize in climate change, ecology, and renewable energy. I'm personally not optimistic that, as a species, we're going to correct our course soon enough to avoid climate disasters. To me, I think this is our new normal, but as communities, we can adapt our infrastructure to this new climate that we live in, instead of trying to outrun it and pretend like it's not happening.
Thank you. And next, Lindsay Rothschild.
Thank you. I agree with what Brad said about the increased climate change, with the climate change problems and increased storms. I think inland flooding is probably one of our biggest vulnerabilities, in terms of its overcoming our natural and built and constructed drainage systems. And so we have to look, and I know we're already starting to work on our sewer system, but what I really liked about what Brad said was reaching out to our knowledge quarter. Again, I'm not a great expert on green infrastructure. I'm learning. Every day, I'm learning, and I find an exciting topic. I went to a seminar down at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. There are so many people on the Climate Action Network. There's so many people working on this in our area. So we have so much knowledge. So I really think we just need to keep pushing forward, bringing mind melds together, and working towards creative solutions with infrastructure. Another area I'm really concerned about is emergency preparedness. Again, thinking about our most vulnerable population, going through the pandemic, we saw how the people that are most disenfranchised and most marginalized are the most impacted. So in terms of our elderly community, extreme weather, are we able to get them to safe cooling places or places with heat, depending on the need? Are we able to get information out in languages that are not English to people that don't speak English in our communities? I know we've already made strides in this direction in terms of setting up the emergency alert system. And I was also heartened during the pandemic, how people, our community really does come together and support each other, in terms of all the volunteers at the East Hampton Community Center, getting food out to people vulnerable, Akind, community organization, organizing to get meals to kids. So I think we have the will to help each other here, but we need to have those structures in place and make sure that people aren't forgotten.
Thank you.
And extreme weather.
Thanks. And so same question, and now for Owen Zarrett, about the specific vulnerability to climate change and what steps you would take to address them.
Absolutely. And excellent points by both my colleagues about needing to look to the experts in the field, for sure. Lots of ideas, just to throw out there. Our infrastructure, as people mentioned, the current technologies we're using for paving are clearly not resilient enough to manage the freeze-thaw cycles that accompany the temperature extremes that come with climate change. We need to invest in more climate-resilient technology around paving our roads and sidewalks. This may mean materials technology, but it may also mean monitoring technology, perform minor maintenance before large potholes form or repaving as needed, which we're all familiar here in East Hampton with. We need to be more aggressive regarding our current reliance on fossil fuels. We need a new solar ordinance. We need to be implementing more use of solar and renewables. We need to be generally more energy-efficient all around in terms of our buildings, and we need to reduce the barriers to implementing sustainable energy solutions. Also, we need to increase our use of electric vehicles here in the city. We need to continue to reduce path plastic waste and increase home and commercial composting. We need to protect our aquifer and our water sources and increase water retention through permaculture and rain gardens. As climate changes, we become more susceptible to drought. Drought's when we do our tile. Drought's when we don't have water. And our farmers need to be aware of what crops to potentially grow as we see rising average temperatures and decrease in availability of moisture. So we need to use our agricultural commission to better inform. Last thing, our natural ecology. This means an aggressive program to remove invasive plants, reduce pesticide use, and establish and expand our native species of plants and trees to foster our pollinator habitats.
And last but not least, Connie Denham.
I, you know, I agree with everything that has been said. It's hard going last with this question, but, you know, absolutely, I think extreme heat, flooding, rising sea levels are also going to be impacting our area. You know, I lived in Kazakhstan for five years, and the extreme heat that was there and cold, in terms of minus 40 degrees, and the first summer that I was there, it was 55 degrees Celsius, which is about 130 degrees or so. And the roads were literally melting, and we have to be prepared for those extreme temperatures. If we don't like our roads now, we're really going to be struggling in the future with extreme heat. So, you know, when I think about kind of our vulnerabilities, certainly infrastructure, as I said, roads, you know, our buildings, we have to be prepared for, you know, our buildings working efficiently, et cetera. Water quality is certainly an issue, and I think some of, with the flooding, being able to have runoff, efficient runoff, so that our roads or the impact on roads is minimized. As Lindsay mentioned, you know, our most vulnerable population is a real concern. You know, how do we move people very quickly in extreme heat situations? And also tapping into our formal and informal community groups that exist. Again, you know, mentoring Akind, mentioning the East Hampton Municipal Aid, et cetera. So I think those are really important. And again, I think also, some people have mentioned affordability. I think that's a real concern and something that is a real vulnerability of ours, particularly as people move off the coastlines with rising seawater. That's going to impact people looking for new homes in inland. So that migration is going to impact our affordability and the residents who live here, because with a reduced housing stock, that's going to increase the cost of living for people who are looking for homes off the coast.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the next question is about actions you would take. So what actions will you take to address the city's economic and racial disparities and physical accessibility issues through your work as a city council member? And I'll go first to Brad Riley.
Yeah, so I mean, just last month, I participated in the Undoing Racism Workshop that was offered by the People's Institute for Survival and Beyond. In attendance were councillors Gomez and Kozinski, educators, members of the Fire and Police Department, and folks from the Community Relations Committee. What I witnessed there was a willingness to learn, to dig into what we know and what we don't know, and to lean into uncomfortable conversations with pretty good success. I do believe that at our heart, we want to do good for our neighbors. We just need to have more education and more collaboration. When it comes to a strategy level, I think the best way forward is a targeted universalism approach to addressing issues of equity in East Hampton. What the foundation of this approach does is it identifies our ultimate goals for all residents, determines the qualitative and quantitative metrics that we need to track, and then we need to start measuring them. The ongoing work from that framework is creating unique targeted strategies for communities in East Hampton. Once we engage in an iterative process with those strategies and our metrics, we can start to effectively steer racial, economic, and accessibility issues towards our ultimate goals. How I see that working, I'd like to engage more with the good people in our community who are already doing this work, specifically Ms. Mohica at the East Hampton High School, the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition, Chamber of Commerce, and the entirety of city council. And then lastly, I'd like to encourage the development of a community advisory board that's inclusive of members of all of our committees, since the work of disability advocacy, poverty alleviation, and community development overlaps in most, if not all of our city boards and committees. I think we have a wealth of talent and intellect within our ranks, and I believe these individuals contain all the capacity that we need to make a concept like targeted universalism strategies work.
Thank you. And same question now for Connie Denham.
You know, when I thought about this question through kind of a climate lens, et cetera, when I think about economic and racial disparities, I think that we have a history nationally and locally in terms of the poorest among us, the most economically challenged, and the most racially diverse are the ones who are impacted most severely by climate and our inability to address the impact of climate challenges. And so I think that, as a community, we have to be aware of those areas of our community that are most vulnerable, and the people that are the most vulnerable in this. And so being able to identify those areas. And then the other piece, I think, in terms of thinking about accessibility, I live on Bryan Avenue, and I think that Bryan Avenue is quite challenged by our sidewalk, and so being able to have sidewalks that make our community more accessible to the individuals that are in need. And so when I think about climate, et cetera, being able to make sure that those areas of town that are impacted have, you know, appropriate infrastructure to be able to address some of the impact of what is happening with the extreme weather challenges that we're faced. And so as a community, I think we have to think about our history with that, and I think that we have to be willing to address and engage the community in conversations to address those needs.
Thank you. And Lindsay Rothschild.
Thank you. This topic is so big and so important to me, and it's really hard for me to focus on what I want to say. Actions I've taken already, as I chaired the Ordinance Review Committee, where we looked at bias in our ordinances, I also advocated and collaborated with the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership and the CPA to reduce barriers in our rent relief program. And they brought it to the council, and myself and a couple other councillors raised concerns about some of the barriers, and they were very receptive, and we went back and reworked it and reduced those barriers. In terms of the, and I'm also was a member of the Public Safety Committee, and we're working through the Mayor's Pledge Report, and hearing a lot of testimony from people in our community about how they feel around policing. And those are really hard conversations. I, one of the things that was really interesting when looking at the ordinances was the snow removal ordinances. We sent it over to the Commission to Disability and asked them to review a bunch of the ordinances, and I was thinking that that one might cause problems, because it's forcing people to clear snow, and maybe they're elderly, or maybe they have a physical disability, and that's hard for them. But what really came back to us, the snow removal ordinances came back very strongly, but it came back because the problem with people who do not remove their snow, and whether or not we are enforcing it, even the city not removing the snow also. If you have a physical disability, if you rely on the sidewalks or bike paths to get somewhere, and you're on your way, and one person hasn't shoveled, your way is blocked. Your day is done. And I really hadn't, like, really considered that. And I realized that's what a lot of things that happen in our city, we don't really consider how someone with a disability might, or somebody who doesn't speak English, or somebody who's, whatever, just doesn't feel safe in that space, how they might experience it. So that's why, and in Sweden, actually, they came up with gender equity was a major issue. Did I get my time thing?
Yes, thank you.
This is my big, this is a topic I love. But anyway, I am going to continue to be working with the Commission of Disability and other stakeholders to talk about how to bring universal design into all of our planning processes and not have it so simple.
That's great. Thank you. And finally, Owen Zarrett.
You know, one of the things I love the most about being on the city council is collaboration. It's not about just what I think, it's about what eight other people think and how to synthesize that. And one of the things I'm very grateful for was some of what councillor Rothschild just spoke about, was bringing some of the concerns from the Ordinance Review Committee to the council, and definitely opening my eyes about how we need to de-center ourselves and be more thoughtful around our ordinances as they pertain to people with disabilities. And that created this whole discussion and a journey for me to work more with advocacy groups and people with disabilities around some issues and around some of our ordinances, and it was really helpful, and I'm really grateful for that. You know, councillor Rothschild talked a little bit about our sidewalks, as other people did. We need a full city audit to determine the state of our sidewalks as they pertain to ADA and accessibility, and potentially even augment what we're doing in the city for accessibility. Also, in terms of accessibility, which was also touched upon, is lingual accessibility. We have to think about the non-English speakers here in town and make sure we're providing language options for residents in our city that are non-English speaking. We have to, as We have to, as mentioned by other people, we need to approach racial disparities with good intentions. And our our efforts to do so need not to be centered on us, but to be centered on the populations we're talking about. We need to gather the appropriate data, like I think Mr. Riley mentioned. We need to look at best practices and we need to look at the resources and then we have to have constructive dialogue. We need to, we need to make sure that we're creating equity options for BIPOC people in the city. This includes all businesses, perhaps through Blueprint East Hampton, but most importantly, our cannabis industry. That has provisions for economic empowerment and yet we don't have any sort of equity provisions in our city. We need to work on that. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the next question is about balancing goals and budget priorities. So how will you balance net zero energy goals with the city's other budget priorities and how will you pay for them? And I'll go to Lindsay Rothschild first.
That wasn't one of our questions, was it?
It is one of the questions in the document that the. The organization put together.
Okay, it wasn't one of the ones sent to us, but can you repeat it?
Yes. So how will you balance net zero energy goals with the city's other budget priorities? And how do you pay for them?
Okay. I guess what I've learned, working in the city and also in big institutions, I worked at colleges. Is that nothing should be siloed. So every time you're looking at one thing, it's not to the detriment of something else. So I think an example of that is we're coming up with the school reuse, for example. Our three schools that we're going to be repurposing. And we're going to be creating an RFP for that, we need affordable housing. But we can also write into our RFP that we want certain energy standards with, you know, in our terms of our ranking that. When we look at, you know, our public, our public. Our public vehicles, like we're getting hybrid vehicles in in our police department. And we are, so I don't think it should be, it should all be integrated. And I think that's what I've been learning is like, I'm going to different groups and going to different committees and boards. And like, I think Brad brought up that there really needs to be a place where these groups come together because so much of it is touching on the others. So I guess that's how I would answer that question, that it's it's not one or the other, it's how can you integrate both?
No, that makes perfect sense. Connie Denham, same question?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a very similar answer to you, right? I think that we have to look at the the long term, what are we trying to achieve? And think about how all of those points intersect and what we can do to budget most efficiently. To be able to address kind of our environmental needs. I think that without question, just globally, you know, climate change is. The most significant number and as a community, we have to do what we can to be able to bring down our emissions, et cetera. And so I think for us to be able to plan accordingly so that everything that we do. You know, is looking at all of these issues that we're talking about in terms of. Economic justice, racial justice, you know, environmentally justice and all of those things intersecting so that we can, you know, address them. As opposed to, you know. This particular organi, this particular department does this, this particular department does this, you know, et cetera. And I think one of the things that the mayor had talked about yesterday was freeing up opportunities for more of those departments to to speak and to talk to one another. And so I think that that's something that, you know, as a city councillor. You know, if I'm elected into this, you know, working with other city councillors to open up those pathways for more discussion, more opportunity, more opportunity to explore ideas. So that we can be the most effective and efficient in kind of our both. Budgeting process, but planning process.
Great and succinct and they tie together nicely. So Owen Zaret, the same question.
Yeah, I think I would build off what my colleagues just said is that we, first of all, we need a plan. And so fortunately in the city, we have an energy advisory committee. I'd probably start off by by sitting down with them and try to set a timeline. What are our long term energy goals in terms of sustainable energies? And also what are the overall costs of those? And then pulling in other groups that are going to be involved with making decisions about. I'm sorry, about Environmental Sustainability Conservation Commission, the Agricultural Commission. Obviously pulling in the mayor and the treasurer because they're the ones who are going to allocate these funds to make these determinations. Much like the tie and bond study that we did to look at our water and sewer infrastructure. We probably need a long term sustainable energy plan as well to look at how we're going to pay for this over a long period of time. And with knowing that and knowing how it will impact the budget, how can we then budget accordingly? Or think potentially about using things like appropriations going forward? Maybe we won't have the money, but we need, we need a plan. So, you know, this goes back to what some of my colleagues are saying that sometimes we're kind of more like mediators and directors. And we want to rely and lean on the resources available to us in the city. And the people who potentially know a lot of what we don't know. But I'd say that we need a plan and we need to figure out then, then from there, we can kind of work forward.
And Brad Riley, next.
Yeah, so I mean, admittedly, I'm going to be totally honest with you all, I'm I'm not your numbers guy. I personally don't know how we can make something like that work. But the good news is about having a city council with nine members on it. And talented people in the mayor's office is that we do have numbers people who can help guide that process. I think what I would be. Interested in looking at is whether or not we could do, you know, broad policy initiatives. Like as an example, in Northampton, Massachusetts, they recently just changed their. Their construction ordinances that any new buildings that are built need to be 100% renewable. I like the idea of that. I just, I'm not the person that can say one way or the other, that I think that East Hampton can do something like that. I would say the other option is that we can do. You know, piecemeal policies, you know, wherever we can tack on. You know, energy saving or. Climate conscious policies, then, you know, I'm I'm interested in doing that too, but. That's going to be for me to rely on the folks that are really good at understanding our budget and the math. So, sorry, I don't have a better answer for you.
That's a fair enough answer and it 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 rhymes with everybody else's answer too. If you think about it, you're all leaning on on expertise and looking to be conveners. And that's, well, it makes it hard for the voters to decide. So. The next question is what steps can the city take to support our residents in shifting their energy dependence to renewable sources? So that's, it's a two part question. First is what can the city do to support? And then the second part is more specifically, do you support? Using the establishment of a public utility that was established mainly for broadband services to provide electric power as well. Either through generation or aggregation. And first we'll go to Aaron Zaret, Owen Zaret, sorry.
I alter you to Aaron. Well, I mean, as most of you know, we took a big step recently with authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract negotiation with Honeywell. To put solar on the roof of City Hall behind the police station and by the water treatment plan. Now, it's it's interesting because so we'll potentially have behind the meter solar in many places in the city. But we also have a couple of contracts requiring us to purchase from other places our renewable energy. So we're kind of in like a hybrid right now. We have both kind of like an aggregation plan plus generating our our own energy. So what works best for the city going forward, I don't know. And again, this is where we lean on people like the Energy Advisory Committee to determine what's best. Obviously, we want to, we want to make a plan for it to be a fully renewable city as soon as possible. We need to foster as many solar panels throughout the city, even looking to harnessing our waterways for some hydroelectric as well. How we do that, though, is also important. We need to be really careful about how solar affects our greenfields. We want to prioritize obviously solar energy, but we don't want to cut down forests in order to do that. So we need to be thoughtful about mostly impervious surfaces such as gray field and brown fields. And making it easier for people to put solar on top of buildings and over parking lots. And we also need to be thoughtful about agricultural land. Solar should go there, but how it goes there should also be something that we very carefully look about, think about. You asked about an MLP, I think it's a good idea. I'm not sure exactly how a city our size that works. We should look at how other cities our size look have done that. Or if there's some sort of regional collaboration, working with another town that also has an MLP to either. Join into some sort of cooperative there. Thank you.
That's great. And Lindsay Rothschild, same question.
Hello. So for the first part of that question, how we can, the city can support residents, like I'm going to look at this again from an energy justice perspective. I think that, I mean, I think it's safe to say, and I think the data shows that most of early adapters to solar are people that are privileged. And so the people that are able to take advantage of the savings and having clean energy. And are people that are, that are, that already start from a privileged place. So how can we get like these solar for all programs that are happening? Like, how can, what funding is there available? And I don't know the answer to this, but it's something I definitely am going to be looking into is to help low and middle income people get solar on their roofs. And also how to get them engaged in community solar programs. Because I also understand that less than 50% of US community solar programs have low, have participation from low income communities. So why is that? Because there's not a big buy in with the community solar. But I think there's a lot in terms of education. Getting, a lot of times people do solar because they hear about it from someone else, they have a friend who's had a good experience with it. So it moves through communities, like I'm I'm about to put solar on my roof and it. You know, the experience shared by a friend and shared their provider like helped me move along that way. I also had some resources to invest and so that, you know, created, and now I'm going to get the benefits. So I would love to see that and also how we can share our solar. They told me I can give back to anyone on the grid. So is there a way for us to give, you know, give? Give easily to neighbors that might be in need. So those, those are things I I would like to do, to look at, to get more people using solar, modern, low income. That also means more roofs are covered too, that we're leaving out right now. That's it. In terms of the municipal light plant, I'll, my answer is very similar to Owen's. I would have to lean in to people that know more about that. I don't know enough yet to say whether we should do that. I like the idea, but that's where I'm sitting there.
And I want to thank you, Lindsay, for doing my job and clarifying that an MLP is a municipal light plant for those in the audience who don't know the jargon. So thank you very much. And next, we're going to Connie Denham.
Yeah, I think the, you know, when I think about helping the community, I think the first thing we need to do is just education. I think our community needs a lot of education and what can we do as city councillors as kind of. Their direct contact with city government to be able to educate them, inform them. About the importance of, you know, renewable energy, et cetera. So supporting them in whatever way we can do for that. I also think that, you know, some of what has already been mentioned, you know, finding ways for people to access. Solar energy, for example. You know, I love the idea of municipal solar. You know, we have solar on our house, trying to find ways for folks to be able to, again, like Lindsay said, to share that. So that more people are able to access that renewable energy. So I think that that's incredibly important. I also think that, I'm not a big fan, I'm going to be very honest with you, of solar fields. I think once our fields are gone, they're gone. And I think that we need to be more intentional about how we think about using those spaces for agricultural needs, et cetera. So, you know, I'm a big supporter of being able to put them on roofs, parking lots, et cetera, municipal buildings, et cetera. And so I think that those things are incredibly important for our community. And in terms of, you know, public utility, you know, I I am a big supporter of the common good. And I think the more that we can do to make ourselves. Energy independent as a community, I think that that helps our residents. And I also think that we have to find more ways of. You know, keeping things, you know, local and building that local economy. And I think that that is one way that 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 supports that.
I muted myself. And so, and then finally Brad Riley, sorry.
Yeah, so I mean, the short answer to that question is yes. I absolutely support establishing publicly owned independent utilities for East Hampton. I think that if we wait for the state or the federal government to shift over to renewable resources. Or public utilities, we're probably going to be waiting a lot longer than we have left on the ecological clock. The long answer is that I personally don't know right now if East Hampton has the capacity to make some of these changes. But I haven't taken a full inventory yet, so I don't actually know. To me, the only thing that's worse than waiting on someone else to fix our problems for us is trying to fix them haphazardly and failing. There's just, there's too much on the line right now when considering publicly owned utilities. So we have to be really careful in how we do that. Also, one of the biggest issues that I think we have in switching over to. You know, a greener economy is that there are naysayers on the fence about renewable energy that we actually have to work with. And if their first experience is a failed energy grid or say they have solar panels that didn't generate the amount of revenue that was promised. Getting them back on board can actually be a lot harder. So, you know, I want to be really careful and strategic about how we navigate this process. I think that our elected leaders need to demonstrate first that they have the political willpower and the political capital to make these kinds of changes successful. But more so, the public in East Hampton needs to show up in greater numbers with informed, level headed desires to make this work too. If I'm elected, I'll take an inventory of how likely I think that East Hampton can succeed in switching over to public utilities. I'm ready to go. But if my assessment is that we don't have the willpower or the capital to make it work. Then the decision switches over to what level of effort and engagement do we need? In order for it to work. Regardless, it's a multi year process before it comes to fruition. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, the the last question before we get to audience questions are this one. And it's a, it's kind of a yes no question. The next generation climate bill requires a municipal opt in stretch energy code with a net zero buildings provision. Do you think East Hampton should opt into new stretch codes when they're developed? And do you otherwise support a net zero energy use target for new municipal buildings? And I'll go first to Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes and yes. I think it's a, we're facing something huge. We have to say yes to these kinds of things and so we got to rip the Band-Aid off. That's it.
Very good. Owen Zaret.
Definitely yes, with an asterix. We dealt with something like this recently where we had ordinance introduced to require a certain amount of solar on new commercial buildings. And, you know, the issue with with these things and changing building codes is it becomes a lot more expensive for people to come here and build in East Hampton. Now, that being said, I I agree with my colleague that, you know, climate change happened yesterday. The planet's already dying and so we need to do something now, today. And so if that means that we're going to be a little bit more stringent on the building codes that we used, then so be it. Although here's where regionalization comes in, is there's potential to reach out to other local communities and say, hey, you guys got to do the same thing. This is the right thing to do for our community, it's the right thing to do for your community. And when you normalize these building codes, so when someone looks at East Hampton and say, oh, I'm going to build somewhere else. Well, guess what? That's the building code there too. And so we need to work with our our regional partners to to try to get everyone to be on the same page here. So, yes.
And Brad Riley.
Yes to both. I mean, it is what it is. Like Owen said, our planet is in the process of dying. Actually, we're in the process of dying. The planet will likely survive without us. It's an existential threat that we're being faced with and. I'd like to take a slower approach and be more cautious and careful, but the time to act is now. These are things that we need to do. The urgency is there.
And Connie Denham?
Yeah, the same. I mean, I think these thing, you know, yes, right? These are, it's an issue, climate change is an issue, we have to deal with it now. You know, we could say, okay, we're going to do it this way, this particular year, and then five years, we're going to have to upgrade that to to meet new standards. And so I think that that is. It's a waste of time, it's a waste of energy, and I think that we need to. it's a waste of time. It's a waste of energy. And I think that we need to act immediately.
Okay, so virtual unanimity. So we've got a few questions and actually the first two are about where you, you know, these, these kind of broad, general questions. So what resources do you use to determine your energy and climate related position? So where, where do you get your information? And I'll go first to Owen Zerret.
Oof, that's a good question. I'm going to just, I'm going to go with Google. I mean, you know, based on any question about really anything, I mean, it's, it's internet research mostly for me. I mean, there's, there's some organizations out there that I've probably looked at more than others. But, you know, typically for any topic, it's, it's doing some, it's doing some internet research, pulling out, kind of trying to look at the best practices, looking at what other municipalities are doing when we're talking about policy. So yeah, that's, that's my short answer.
Okay. And Connie Denham, same question.
Can you just repeat the question?
Yeah, sorry. It's what resources do you use to determine your energy and climate related position? So where do you go for your information and how do you form your opinions?
Yeah, I think engaging with other folks who are concerned about this particular issue is a, is a good starting place for me in terms of that. I think as someone who is stepping into, or potentially stepping into, you know, as a role as a city councillor, I think it's about finding out what other cities and communities like East Hampton are doing and how can we adopt pieces of those things to be able to kind of improve our energy efficiency? I think some of that is just educating myself in terms of trying to understand some of these particular issues. It's, it's not my area of expertise. And so, you know, that's something that, that has to be done. I think that also, again, we are close to universities, right? And, you know, we have this knowledge corridor and so reaching out to institutions to be able to kind of help guide us and engage us also in, you know, finding solutions to our particular situation. And so I think those are some of the things that, that I look to. And I also think some of it has to do with personal choice, right? So Rebecca and I put, Rebecca's my partner, you know, we put solar energy on this house. And so, you know, we did our own research to think about kind of what's best for our particular house. Talked to a variety of different companies to be able to do that. And so, you know, some of it is just that process, that personal process of trying to understand kind of what's best for this particular house. And then also then working with other peoples to engage in conversations to think about what's best for this particular community.
You're muted.
So Lindsay Rothschild, the same question. Where do you get your information?
Oh my God, I was having like a flashback to Katie Couric talking to Sarah Palin. So I just wanted to ask her for one book. I, I also do a lot, I do a lot of, like, you know, like probably a lot of other people, I listen to NPR. And then I'll hear a story that triggers my interest and then I'll kind of go down a rabbit hole looking at that. Like that's what happened with solar for all projects. I listened to a DC NPR, so I was listening to what was going on down there and then I'll research it. And I look at the Massachusetts municipal vulnerability site to look for what local projects are going on in our state. Cause those, and I'm a people person, so I reach out to, I have a friend who works at Point Blue conservatory, conservation, coastal, in Point Reyes in Northern California, who does, been working climate change his whole career. And I reach out to him a lot and ask him questions. So that's pretty much, I'm just always curious and looking to learn more.
And Brad Riley?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that I've been pretty blessed in my educational journey to have been able to learn from Murray Bookson, who was one of the founders of social ecology. You know, I've taken courses at the University of Massachusetts that were around governing of the commons, specifically focusing on the work of Lynn Ostrom. What I tend to do is, you know, I think with any, any contentious issue, there's always going to be competing interests that have their own narratives. They're working for people, you know, so like economics, for example, the economics of climate change. You could read the same data from two different people and it's going to tell two completely different stories. So, you know, I look into the scholarly research and I look into the economic reports and I compare what people are saying. Try to understand who the people are that are saying the things that they're saying and try to piece out what I think is the most accurate representation of the facts. You know, and then also, right, I mean, just like what Connie was saying, you know, I'm, I'm a student at UMass Amherst studying public policy. A lot of my professors and classmates are in this field. So I rely on them. I ask the actual people with PhDs, what, what do you think about this or what's the best way forward? So, you know, I think it's really relying on all of our stakeholders in our community because we have tons of them.
Great answer. So the next one is, is a question that was also asked to the mayoral candidates. And it's a very large question and it allows you to go pretty wide ranging. What do you see as the biggest issues facing East Hampton and the region right now? And I guess rather than having me circulate around, any one of the candidates can choose to go first. You just raise your hand. Okay, Brad Riley. And then Lindsay.
Yeah, I mean, so look, a lot of the things that we're talking about right now, I mean, there are things that are essential that we need to do. But the fact of the matter is the changes that we're making, like we can't create a bubble around East Hampton and everything else is going to be fine. We need to be engaged with other communities in our area, or I would say in the entire region. Because they're all facing the exact same things that we are. The climate in Connecticut is no different right now than the climate in Massachusetts. And if there are, you know, city planners or regional planners or environmentalists who are coming up with ideas of things that work, we need to start collaborating with them to find out what we can all collectively do together. Because if we make this the bubble the size of New England and we start collaborating with these communities, then we start creating a matrix of likely solutions. So I'll just say one organization that is an example of how this works is the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And they work on a lot of really great initiatives that kind of stem from the Vermont, Massachusetts border down into Connecticut. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that I think in the future we need to start focusing on because we can do everything we want to protect East Hampton. But if other people aren't doing their part to protect their communities, we're going to get snowed under by the climate, whether we make it changes or not.
Good perspective. And Lindsay Rothschild, if you want to, again, biggest issues facing East Hampton in the region right now?
Okay, I'll just be short. I think the biggest issues are climate change and affordability. So, you know, just housing stock, this is a really big issue, lack of, lack of homes and affordable homes.
Fair enough. Owen or Connie, either one of you can answer. Otherwise I'll assign it to Connie.
Yeah, yeah. So I think without question, I think climate is the most significant issue for not just East Hampton, I think the nation, the globe, et cetera. And so I think that we have to be working on trying to find solutions to navigate that and to manage that. Again, I think that, you know, part of that, again, when I think about climate and I think of sea level rising, et cetera, like we are going to be inundated. And that's going to impact our natural resources. That's going to impact our water. That's going to impact our ability to, to manage wastewater. You know, all of those things I think are really significant. And I think the other thing that I'm noticing that is particularly of concern to me is when I, just when I walk around my neighborhood and my, my, my streets, we have so many trees that are dying and coming down. And I think that we have to be much more proactive in terms of replanting trees to protect our roads. Because it's actually really, really quite alarming to me. And is that the largest issue? No, I think all of these pieces fit together, but it's, it's significant.
And Owen Zerret, again, the, the broad question.
Yeah, I mean broadly, I mean, the reason we're here is because there's a climate crisis. I mean, that's why we passed a resolution around this. And then the climate crisis doesn't just, isn't just an ever heating sun that's just affecting East Hampton. It's affecting everyone around us. And as people mentioned, Brad, Lindsay and Connie, you know, we need regional approaches to, to figure out how to address this. You know, recently here in East Hampton, I was talking to councillor Rothschild about this. We passed a single-use plastics ordinance, which is great, except all of that compostable material, you need a commercial composting facility. So everyone, the Commonwealth or everyone in Western Mass can require compostable materials in their, in their takeout packaging. But if you got nowhere to actually put it where it properly composes or decomposes, that's not good. So we need to work with our partners who are working on this to, to be able to, to actually have that decompose, not just sit in landfill and do nothing. I think Connie brought up a good point. We need to foster our canopy, our oxygen producers. And affordability is killing us. It breaks my heart to see people who have lived here for multiple generations or younger people who want to move here and they just can't afford it. They get outbid. The overall prices are too high. We're gentrifying the city, which is not going to make us a more diverse place to live. And again, as I touched upon before, you'll probably hear a lot about this over the next two years if I get reelected is, you know, our pollinators. We need to fast, foster natural spaces. Those birds and those insects do so much for us that we're not aware of. We need to foster those environments, expand those environments and really be thoughtful about that. So, thank you.
That's great. So now to, to kind of the, the key question that I, you know, is your chance to differentiate yourselves. And in fact, you've agreed on a whole lot during this conversation. So the, the next big question is, what do you think distinguishes you from the other at-large candidates in this race? And who are you endorsing for mayor? And I'll go to Connie, Connie Denham first. I think you're muted.
Sorry. Read the question one more. What distinguishes me?
Yes. And who are you endorsing for mayor?
What distinguishes me? Well, I haven't been on city council before. And I think, so I think part of what distinguishes me is that I'm, I'm new to city council. And I think that I have, I'm an out of the box thinker. And I'm willing to, you know, engage people, the community in conversations about kind of what their interests are and what their concerns are. You know, our campaign, we knocked on 2,000 doors, door to door, asking people what was concerned of them. What do they, what do they, what do they need? What do they appreciate about East Hampton? And so really trying to find answers from the community in terms of what they identify as the priorities of East Hampton. And so I think that's something that I'm particularly proud of. I think the other thing is, you know, my personal background. I've worked with underrepresented populations my entire life, worked in homeless shelter, worked with youth who had group homes for kids, et cetera. And so I think I have a unique perspective in terms of, of, of understanding people's experiences and kind of what's a priority for them. So I think that's something that's really important to me. And do, do we have to say who we're voting for for mayor? That just feels like a very private.
I don't think you have to. I'm just reading the question from an audience.
Yeah, I think that, that who I vote for is, is something that's very personal to me. And yeah.
Fair enough. I guess Brad Riley, same question.
Yeah, so obviously everybody that's listening, right, they can recognize that of the four of us, we have way more in common and have more shared goals than we do differences. All I can say is what I would bring to city council is that I believe that the role of a city councillor is to be a mediator between multiple levels of government and be a liaison for the public. I think that it is a pattern in our political culture that the public uses elected officials as sounding boards. They want to complain about something. They want to yell about something. They're angry about something. And in terms of policy ideas, I, I am open to every single policy idea that anybody wants to bring to the table. But they have to come with a problem and what they think their solution would be. I don't want to hear problems from people because I'm only one person. As a body, we're only nine people. The amount of things that could go on in a city is too much for one person to understand everything. So if you feel so compelled about something that has impacted you, I think that somewhere deep within that person, there's a solution to a problem. I want people to be more engaged. And then I also want to advocate for policies at the state level. We should be talking to representatives and senators and even the governor if we need to. Lastly, I have no problem saying who I'm going to vote for for mayor. There is only one clear choice and that's Nicole LaChapelle. I support everything that she has done. I've witnessed East Hampton turn into a vibrant community over the last 10 years. And she has a huge part in that. And to me, I'm 100% on board with her.
Thank you very much. And Owen Zerret, same question.
That's a tough question. I mean, the, the obvious answer is that my name, what distinguishes me is my name fits in well with the zip code and that's 01027. Beyond that, you know, I think it's pretty well known that I'm very out there. I don't mean in terms of like my mind, although that might be the case. But just, I tend to get out into the community a lot. And that's not, I'm not saying that as a detriment to my other colleagues, but I, I tend to, like I spoke about earlier, you know, participate in a lot of things outside of chambers. I do interviews with local businesses. I do business spotlights. But, you know, without kind of focusing necessarily on what distinguishes me, I think what I'd like, what I would want to say is that we're all individuals. We all obviously have distinguishing features. That's what makes us each a smaller piece of a bigger solution in terms of why there's, why we're a multi-member body and why there's nine of us working towards common goals. And I think the distinguishing, the distinguishing factors between each of us is what makes sometimes that sum greater than the equal of its parts. In terms of who I'm voting for for mayor, I think Mayor LaChapelle's done a wonderful job. I started my career on city council at the same time that, that she was elected mayor. I actually volunteered for her campaign for a couple of weeks. I agree that, that who I vote for is, is private. But I will say that there's been tremendous transformation of the city under Mayor LaChapelle's tenure so far. Thank you.
Thanks. And Lindsay Rothschild.
Well, I'm a woman, so there's that. Just in terms of differentiating myself. We need more dumb women on the city, on the city council. I also, my background is I grew up in downtown Detroit. I grew up as a, you know, in a predominantly African-American community. My first teachers were African-American, my principal, my doctor, the OB delivered me. So I grew up in, in a context that is unique and I now feel very, a lot of gratitude towards my parents to put me in Detroit Public Schools and to raise me in a community where I gained the skills of being around communities and people that are different than myself. When I learned Black History, I didn't learn it from an object, like as, you know, I learned it from. from people telling me the history of their own people. And it's very, that's a very, that was a great opportunity for me. So my whole life, I've been in communities with groups of people that are different than me. I was actually, I'm an intern of the year in the New York City Council in 1994. I served for the, I served under the first Dominican elected official in the United States in Washington Heights. I spent a lot of time studying immigrant education. I did my thesis paper on the crisis in bilingual education and the low graduation rates. So I, my undergrad was in social policy, my master's was in teaching English to speakers of other languages, spent a lot of time in immigrant communities. I'm really, I feel like I'm really good at networking and bringing groups together, seeing connections and innovative solutions. I, like I said, I started a business in the pandemic, I actually started two. So I just, I think that I'm a doer, I'm positive, I'm inclusive and I bring a unique lens.
Beautiful. So the next question, and it appears to be the, the, the last question, is, is in some ways kind of specific and in some ways seems almost existential for, for the city in a certain way. So it says, "I have noticed as a teen walking through town, past so many dispensaries that it's difficult to feel safe in my surroundings. For example, the bike path behind East Works no longer feels safe for me to travel even during the day. Can you comment on the issue of dispensaries in areas that minors access?" And I guess I'll go first to Owen Zaret.
Yeah, that's a great question. And, you know, we thought, we talked about this a lot when we were implementing a policy around cannabis in terms of what the actual potential dangers and, and harm to youth is, as well, when we were discussing things like buffers and historical data from other states. One of the things I did with some of my time during the pandemic was to get a graduate certificate in cannabis regulatory affairs from Clark University. And so from a safety perspective, I don't think there is a safety issue. I talked to our police department a lot about this. Is there more minor access? Historically, the data, when you look at other states, is that minor use, people under 18, that use either flat or has decreased with legalization of cannabis. Now, that being said, we always talk about, that's great. So that's what happened in Colorado or California or Washington, but we do need to look at what's happening here. We have the Healthy Youth Coalition here, they're data gatherers, we need to work based on data. And even if there aren't dangers, the perception of danger is important to talk about in our community because that's still how someone feels. And so we need to sit down with that resident or residents and find out, well, why do you feel this way around our cannabis industry? What could those, the proprietors of dispensaries be doing to make you feel more safe here? Because yeah, we went from zero to 60, are actually closer to zero to six in terms of how many dispensaries we have here at East Hampton. I will say that while cannabis is legal, we need to think more about how those are stored in our homes and think about a lockbox program. And that's again, something we can partner with our youth and the Healthy Youth Coalition around.
Okay, I'm, I'm actually going to just cycle through, I want to give everyone a chance. So Lindsay Rothschild?
I would say, Joyce Julie posted that, I would say tell me more about that because that's interesting to me that you feel unsafe and that's not how I want you to, you know, we can throw any kind of data at you and say, this is why you shouldn't feel unsafe, but that doesn't change the fact that you do and there must be factors. So I welcome you to reach out to me, Julie, and I, and have a conversation because I want to hear what's making you feel unsafe and do. So, and I also wanted to finish my other question, I didn't realize, I am supporting Nicole LaChapelle in the mayor election. I think she's done an excellent job in the city, I think she's a strong leader. And I also enjoyed learning about Don Torrey tonight though as well and welcome as a participation in the city.
Thank you. So I'll go next to Brad Riley.
Yeah, so I mean, I really want to echo what Lindsay and Owen have just said. There is a difference between statistical facts and like perceptions of what's going on. We do know for a fact that in communities that have recreationalized cannabis, there are actually reductions in crime. So, you know, this is, whether it feels that way or not, we're not actually having issues with crime around the dispensaries, specifically Insa, which is right next to the park. In my opinion, I, I was surprised at how incredibly regulated all of the standards are for our dispensaries. In, in an ideal situation, I think that we did it better than most communities have. But that being said, right, if the fears are there, they're there and that's real. So, you know, we do need to address that. And, you know, maybe that looks like, you know, Owen mentioned the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition. I know that right now they're talking about developing a social norms campaign, which I think can help out a lot. Or, you know, maybe we can use some of the revenue in the cannabis fund to do an outreach education program that, that shows our citizens that there really isn't anything to be afraid of. It makes sense. I mean, for the last, you know, 50 to 70 years, we've had media narratives and government policies that have told us that this is something that's bad. And what we're finding out is that it's not actually as bad as people originally told us. So I think we just need to have more conversations and more training and outreach and education. I, I think the dispensaries would be open to that as well.
Connie Denham, any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think the first thing I would say is, you know, your experience is real and it matters, right? And I think that it's really important to, to recognize and understand that you're probably not alone, right? And so I think one of the things that as city councillors we can do is try to pull other young people in to have a conversation, to find out how they're feeling about that. You know, like, like I always said, you know, you can throw statistics and you can think there's expectations or this shouldn't be bad, but there are, people do have anxieties around things that they're seeing, et cetera. And so I think that we have to, you know, find ways of addressing that. And I think that some of those, again, some of those pieces through the educational pieces and de-stigmatization of cannabis, et cetera, I think are all a part of that piece, but the most important piece is that you're concerned and we have a responsibility to find out if there's other people who have a similar concern and what we can do to make you feel safer in your community.
Thank you so much. And, and with that, I want to really thank all four candidates for a thoughtful and decent and I think sensitive and caring discussion about your city. And before I hand it off to Steve Linsky, I really want to thank Evan LeBeau and Paige Delinsky and East Hampton Media for making this function.
Well, a big thank you, Ben. We appreciate you coming over and, and joining us this evening. And again, thanks of course to Connie and to Jen particularly, to Evan and to Paige for being behind the scenes here, making this go. There may be folks who have questions in their minds and so we, before we break, we want to make sure that all the candidates have an opportunity right now, if they want to use their chat function to, to give our viewers the contact information that you would, you know, that they can direct questions to you about. So while we're kind of talking about this, maybe you can kind of type it in and I will read them, I will read them out loud if I see any. Okay. For Owen Zaret, Owen goes by O N four, that's not the number four, S F O R, easthampton@gmail.com. For Connie, excuse me, Connie Denham, oh, another four, denhamforesthampton@gmail.com. And Brad has, I guess he has a Facebook site, www.facebook.com/mourpolicy. Also, I think Bradley@commendkind.life, is that correct, Brad? And Lindsay, did you put one up here?
I did, it was before the.
It was before. Just tell folks directly, go ahead.
Oh, it's just lrothschild@easthamptonmatt.gov or you could put Lindsay Rothschild 01027@gmail.
Okay, great. Thank you again for a wonderful program and hopefully it was enlightening to some folks. Reminder that early voting is still in effect and you can go down, place your ballot, you know, place your ballot right at the city hall tomorrow or on Tuesday. You can go to high school, all the precincts are voting at the high school on, on Tuesday. And the candidates here for city council are two-year terms. And so while that hasn't changed, the mayor's race, and the mayor is now a four-year term and the first time we've used ranked choice voting. So it's an exciting time, a good time to vote. So please take that opportunity. Thanks again, you know, for East Hampton Media who will be airing this multiple times and we appreciate your, your attendance. Thank you.